Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Need to order, are there any public comments? If not, we can move on.
I have a public comment. Okay, I was kind of surprised that we've got all these options. And I had asked Mike Malloy if they're going to have other meetings and stuff. And he, and I'll quote him, said, no, they're going to look at different funding. Now, the thing that irritates the hell out of me is, you know, I asked about, somebody's had meetings, and apparently I wasn't invited, or they didn't want me there, one or the other. Now, I think this is premature. I don't think we should be doing this, but it is what it is. And I hope to hell we learned something from it. Don't try to screw the taxpayer, because this is what I look at. I'm looking at these options and I'm saying, who the hell figured it out? And I see it's Tony DiNofrio, and I would assume that the chairperson was Mike Malloy. Am I correct?
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know what you're talking about, Fran, so I don't know what you're talking about.
You don't know what I'm talking about? Is that, well, let me read the first thing here. It says, "Director of Facilities and the Spennelli Committee Chairperson," is that you?
Yes.
All right, well then, what the hell you think? You don't know what I'm talking about? Come on. Now, the thing that irritates me is I asked to be included in these meetings. Excuse me, Leon, I'm talking, hang on a minute.
Right.
And the point of it is, I should have been notified. I wanted to know when the meetings were, where they were, why and how I wasn't, I don't know. But I'm telling you something, you are going to tick the taxpayer off playing these games. And this is one big game.
We have not had a meeting. Fran, we have not had any meetings. We have not had any.
Who came up with this? Who came up with the options?
Tim.
I've not had any meetings, so let's continue.
That's wait.
All I want to say is, we, in public comments, we're not supposed to be going back and forth.
That's right. This is a public comment.
Leon, if I've got something to say, I'm going to say it, period. You're not going to stop me out.
All right, Fran, I think we've got, I think we've got your concern.
Okay, we can move on, I'm done.
Is there anything else you'd like to add, Fran?
Well, this, this thing is entirely wrong, how this is working. So we can round the bit.
Well, let's, let's go through it so that we all understand it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, what I'd like, what I'd like to do before we get to the, we're really working on number three on the agenda. What I'd like to do is to move to number two, what is building projects presentation. Who is going to do that?
That's me, Renee.
Okay, Renee, thank you. Go ahead.
Laura, can you allow me to screen share? Or am I, yep, I can, okay, thank you. And is that working? Can everybody see the?
Yes, we have, we do have something, yes.
Okay, so this is just a report kind of summary to let the board know what we've been working on with the past couple of months with the project manager that we hired through Esser Funds. We know that we have a good deal of money coming in through ARP-ESSER, which ARP stands for the American Rescue Plan, and Esser, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So I basically wanted to kind of give you an overall picture of, you know, what we've been doing and how we've gotten there, just so you're all aware. So in the document, I do have some acronyms at the top, and then some basic information about ARP-ESSER, so that fund of money itself. That money, we are required to set aside a minimum of 20% to address learning loss. And any of the money that we spend has to fit into one of 14 categories. I'm not going to read through each of these, but these are the categories that we've become familiar with as administrators of this money. They all, everything has to fit into a bucket. So basically, we have to put applications into the Agency of Education, tell them how we're planning to use the money as it relates to these categories. And then they determine whether or not it meets the intent, and then if so, they give us approval to go ahead and spend the funds. So again, 20% has to be set aside for learning loss, which is category 13. Category 14 is construction projects, and because we do have some sufficient funds coming in, that has really been a focus of what we're going to be using these monies for. Another thing to note is that the money we have, or the money that is coming from the federal, federal Department of Education, is through September 30th of 2024. So that is, when that time arrives, the money goes away. So we are working to make sure that we're not going to have to send any of that money back to the federal government. So one of the plans, besides setting, you know, the 20% aside for learning loss, we want to make sure that we're continuing to point in the employment of the new positions that we funded through Esser 2, or that second bucket of money that was awarded. So we have social workers, board certified behavior analysts, family engagement specialists, so on and so forth. You can see I have them all listed there. And then we're also going to continue initiatives that we've started through Esser 1 and Esser 2. One of them being a contracted service with nursing to support our existing nursing staff, and also the project manager that has helped put this information together, is currently funded through Esser 1. So we'll be sliding that investment over into the ARP-ESSER bucket as well. So that's, that's the gist of kind of what we were planning to use the money for. The approach to this has been, again, a real keen focus on our facilities. And in April of last year, the Agency of Education issued a guidance document. It was entitled "A Strong and Healthy Year: Facilities and HVAC Considerations." So some of the highlights of that, talking about occupant comfort and what the temperature should be maintained to be in our buildings, relative humidity, what's recommended, what's not recommended, so on and so forth. So as we move on down through all of these recommendations from the agency, our project manager went and scheduled meetings with each of our facilities managers at all 10 of the buildings throughout the SCU, so the two buildings that Mount Anthony owns, and met with not only the facility manager, but also administrators. They toured the buildings, had follow-up discussions, and through those discussions, the project manager developed a list of potential projects, again, with the focus on the document, the guidance document from the Agency of Education that really focuses on the facilities and the HVAC considerations. So we reviewed those lists of projects and confirmed them with the facility manager. Then the project manager went through and just kind of tried to identify what probable costs might be on a unit cost. So some of them are based on a square foot cost, some of them are just rounded on a per-unit cost. They're very preliminary at this point, but when we get a little bit further along, when you see the next steps, we have to have costs associated with them to kind of get over the first hurdle with the Agency of Education. So that's why he went through that exercise at this point. So in addition to meeting and touring all these buildings, the agency came out with another initiative that we had to do, a school facilities inventory in December. So thankfully, our project manager assisted all of our facilities managers with that, because it was no small feat. But again, going through that exercise further documented what our existing buildings have, and is just giving us better groundwork for moving forward. So through all of that, we then started to look at prioritization of the projects that were identified. We, again, at the recommendation of the agency, we have weekly meetings, they're called Coffee and Conversations. They suggested maybe giving each project, we have identified a category 1, 2, or 3, and that is the exercise that we went through with tier 1, again, being the focus on HVAC, so heating, ventilating, air conditioning. Tier 2 projects, we kind of set aside, we looked at tier 3 after tier 1 of things that we probably wouldn't have funding available for. We weren't really sure if they would actually fit into the, into any of the criteria that the agency set forth, that we have to abide by for use of these funds. So we figured out what category 3 was, and then anything else that didn't fit into those, we put into the tier 2. So once we did those, the project manager again reached out to the facilities managers to review that, to make sure that we were all on the same page. So the SPSU allocation of ARP-ESSER is just under 16 million, and 20% of that we have to set aside at a minimum for learning loss. So that leaves us a remainder of 12.6 million. Is this large enough for everybody to see? Okay?
Yep, yep.
Great, thank you. And then we decided, well, we had to figure out, what's the most equitable way to try to allocate this money between all the buildings that we have? I guess I jumped ahead a little bit. So I did, between the set aside for learning loss and all of our other positions and initiatives, we subtracted another million dollars out of that. So the remainder that we have is 11.6 million for our facilities projects. So we looked at student counts as of December 1st, and basically just tried to come up with a ballpark idea as to if we were to allocate out by student, the remaining 11.6 million dollars, you know, that's a rough way for us to kind of figure out how much money, you know, seems like it would be the most equitable way to try to allocate that out by, by school. So you can see the high school and middle school are at the bottom of the list there, and they total 6.6 million dollars, 6.7 million dollars. And the tier 1 projects, scroll down a little bit more, so you can see we just pulled these allocations, round numbers down. So the high school allocation's about 4.182, middle school allocation from up here, the 2.536, 2.537, rounded up. And then we looked at the tier 1, so the baseline HVAC optimization. And this would involve things such as making sure all of, all the building square footage is covered with proper mechanical ventilation, making sure that the filters are up to what they should be, looking at testing and balancing of the systems, making sure that building management systems are operational, and if they're not, get them up to snuff, testing, balancing, indoor air quality monitoring systems, and then one that I'm sure everybody's excited to hear about, air conditioning. So these, these projects that we have identified in the baseline HVAC would include air conditioning, the two main buildings, so the high school and middle school. So those costs at the high school level, about 4.2 million dollars, and a tier 2 item was identified as the replacement of a boiler, but I think we actually have money in, it may be targeted, I have to confirm with Tony, if we have money in the local budget for that, we wouldn't be able to use federal funds for that. It was something that he identified as something that he would like to get done. And then similarly, up at the middle school, that baseline HVAC is just shy of 1.7 million dollars. So again, these are just really rough ballpark estimates based on square footage and/or unit costs. So in addition to what these construction costs are, we're also going to have to go through the process of getting a design team to actually design these systems. So if you notice on this line here, I've totaled what the tier 1 projects are for both buildings, so about 6 million dollars. We're estimating, again, roughly 20% soft costs and contingency, so that would kind of set aside money to hire the engineering firms to go ahead and do the design. Once they do the design, we've got to put it out to bid, and then once we bid it, we'll actually have the true hard numbers. So with that, right now is what we're, you know, going through the feedback process. So we're gathering that feedback. Our hope is to begin submitting these projects to the Agency of Education for concept approval. So with that, I have to basically put a narrative together, I have to have a rough budget, and I have to identify the funding source. We submit all of that, which we haven't done for any project yet, and then we have to wait for the agency to come back and either tell us yay or nay on what we've submitted. At the same time, we have to go through the historic preservation process. Thankfully, neither of the Mount Anthony buildings are designated in the historic preservation districts, we won't have to worry about that, but some of my other districts do. We'll also have to coordinate with our regulatory agencies and, you know, make sure that, you know, if Act 250 were to be involved, or if it's anything, Agency of Natural Resources, anything along those lines, we've got to make sure we've got all of our ducks in a row, as far as that goes as well. So if the agency comes back with positive, you know, approved projects, we will then move beyond that step into the next phase, which, as I was mentioning before, we're going to have to basically get design firms in place. And our project manager that's assisting through this process is going to facilitate that for us. He'll go ahead and he'll put together the request for proposal packages, he'll facilitate that, he'll collect them all, and he'll advise us and the board, you know, as to who, you know, his recommendations are, as to the design firm that we should go with. We'll have them design the projects, we'll get those out to bid, we'll get the permits in place, and then eventually break ground for construction. And again, we have to get all of this done by September 30th of 2024. So the clock is ticking, we got a lot of work to do. And hopefully, because we really have focused on that guidance document from the agency, and really trying to focus on the, you know, the HVAC recommendations and occupant comfort, controlling that relative humidity and the temperature, we're hoping that there wouldn't be any reason for them to deny these projects, but if that were the case, we would go back to, you know, the list of projects and just kind of keep chipping away and resubmitting until we're, you know, we're sure that we can spend down these funds. So that in a really big nutshell is what we've been up to the past couple of months, and the plan that we are getting ready to undertake, what's starting to submit these HVAC projects to the agency for review and approval.
Thank you, Renee. I have just one question, and I'm sure maybe, maybe a few others. What kind of outlay of cash do we have to make in order to have these proposals go in? And is, are, are we going to be liable for a good deal of expenses that we incur that may not be approved by the committee and be reimbursed? In other words, do we have the cash to be able to do what we need to do to be able to supply the information they need, even if it's denied?
The, the only cost that we're incurring right now is paying the project manager for his work, and that was approved through our Esser 1 application, so we're, we're good. Again, we're going to, we're going to pay them to, you know, facilitate the RFP process, so that, that's all on the engineering firms dime, like they put together those proposals. And again, we really wouldn't be moving forward without the, the final approval from the Agency of Education, when we actually have plans and specifications that we then have to upload to them for final review. And then once we have that, we, we should be good to go.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
See, Jackie has her hand up.
Jackie, I don't have it on my screen, so somebody will have to identify to me.
Jackie, you're muted. Jackie, you're muted.
Got it. Oh. So who's the project manager?
We went out to bid, gosh, was it last summer? When we got proposals from four or five architectural and engineering firms, and the SPSU board awarded it to Centerline Architects, a local firm here in town. And the point person is Michael Briggs. He is a certified project manager and cost estimator, and he's actually a retired project, senior project manager from Williams College. He was down there for a couple of decades, I think, so well experienced, invested in projects like this.
Anybody else?
I have a question. Is there a, a local contribution, local share of any of this?
No.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, Renee, we think, we all thank you and the whole team that's been working on this. I can see what a mammoth project it is, and, you know, if it all pans out, we're going to be endowed with some very, very nice facilities, and that's, that's just great.
Our energy bills will probably go up a little bit, because we'll be air conditioning our buildings, but I think the occupants will say it's well worth it.
Well, we'll just be sure it's included in the future budgets to do that. Are there any other questions before we move on to the Spennelli Field? If not, we'll go on to the Spennelli Field. Now, most of you, I hope all of you have received the, the document that was sent to us this afternoon, that gives us some options that we can then give in terms of, use in terms of working through this. What I'd like to do, and I've just reviewed these, as most of you have, very briefly, but I think the best thing to do is go through each option, and then see where the board stands on those options. So if we start with, yeah.
If I could give you just a little bit of background, too, I think it might help kind of lay the groundwork. So Peter D'Anas, I think as many of you know, has come to a couple of our meetings and is an advocate for, you know, supporting athletics, and he's been taking care of our baseball fields at our high school and middle school for years. He was a football player and, you know, feels passionately about Spennelli Field as well. So he actually reached out to Ashley and approached her with a proposal that he put together on his own accord. He had reached out to other vendors and equipment suppliers, and he came back with essentially what options 1 and 2 are. He would be doing this himself. You know, and he, he looked at the field and can tell that the subsurface drainage is causing some of the problems in the field, and to really correct that, you know, he wanted to be able to remove the first layer, regrade it, crown it, so it drains properly, and then put new sod down. So the reason I asked Tim if I could put this on the agenda was because of the cost associated with that, that if the board wanted to re-sod the field, I'm going to have to put it out to bid, because it's that much money. It's a pretty tight timeframe, you know, if we were going to do this, we'd have to get it done in the spring, so it has the late spring and summer to grow to be ready for the fall season. He is offering, Peter is offering to donate, you know, his time and a lot of his money, too. So I think once we put it out to bid, I don't think anybody would come near what his estimated costs are, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that he, he reached out, he's kind of moving this along, you know, through his, his own efforts. And then just this past week, I think there was an organization that also connected with Peter and Ashley, which is option number three when we get down there, the field turf, it just came up. I, the board has not met about it, the ad hoc committee has not met about it, and I actually, I had reached out to Mike a couple of weeks ago to see if he would reconvene the ad hoc committee to just review the resurfacing option, and he politely declined, saying that that was not the objective of the ad hoc committee. The committee has, you know, their vision is a long-range plan with turf. So because this turf option came up, I wanted to throw that out there for the board to consider, too. So even if you, you look at this tonight and you decide, well, we need, we need more information, we need more time, you're not committing to anything tonight, other than if you wanted to resurface with sod this spring, I need to know that sooner than later, so I can put it out to bid, and we can give them the go-ahead to basically get the field in at least a playable condition for this fall. So that is how we got where we are right now.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll go over that, and obviously, we are very appreciative of Peter D'Anas's efforts and willingness to contribute to them. If we just go through option 1, it would be pretty easy to see if we go down to the pros and cons. The, the con is that we wouldn't, does not enlarge the field so that it would be a legitimate soccer field. It would be basically a temporary fix. It wouldn't have any long-term benefits in terms of, of the weather. In other words, being able to use the field more extensively than it is being used now. Would anyone like to speak to option 1? If not, we'll go on. Renee, you'll tell me if anybody raises their hand, okay?
Actually, Laura, if you can keep an eye, because I, Tim, I've gone ahead to share my screen to put up Ashley's update that she sent today to share with everyone, in case anybody's watching from home, too. Option number one is to resurface the, the field with natural grass, the estimated cost about $200,000. So it's basically stripping the field down, bringing the topsoil and sand in, regrading, crowning, and then putting new sod in. Ed has a question.
Ed has a question.
Yeah, option 1 and option 2, they both include fixing the drainage, correct?
Option number 1 will, will fix the existing field as it stands now without widening it. To widen the field to the proper playing size for a soccer field, we actually have to move some of the drainage, so that's why the cost goes up for option 2.
And then I think the square footage of the, you know, the sod, the field itself is a little, it's going to be a little bit bigger, so it's not, but yes, Ed, I think both option 1 and option 2 are getting down to the, the drainage levels, and, and really like, option 2 would move the bleachers outside of the, outside of the track, so that's also added to option 2. Option 1 just, basically just takes the football current, like, layout of the field and, you know, kind of, kind of re-does it that way.
Any other questions on option 1? Or I guess we could go down to option 2?
I don't see any, I don't see any hands.
Thank you. If we can go on then to option 3, I think that needs a little further explanation.
I have a hand on 2.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, I'm highly in favor of option 2, only because, first of all, Peter designed that, and, and he has help from several people, including, I'm sure Fran Kenny would chip in, as well as myself, but I, I think it's, it kind of encompasses most of what we have asked for without the large bill.
Thank you. Any others?
Just to, sorry, just to let everybody, like, so option 1 and option 2, again, this is just the, just the field, so it doesn't have anything to do with the lights, the track, the, the complex itself, it is just the surface of the field and re, like, putting a new grass layer down for a quarter of a million dollars, just to like redo the field. So I just want to make sure that the bill is a lot less, but it's just dealing with the field itself.
Susan has her hand.
I think that I was just going to make the same comment, so Mike just answered my question, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Laura?
Fran, yeah, it's Fran.
Yeah, okay, and, and I could go along with option 2, because you're going to need to move the bleachers anyway. Tearing down that building, I could probably have it tore down about four hours, so it didn't make any difference to me. But the, the point of it is, what about the track that's in the building? Is that supposed to have been dug up or just resurfaced? Nobody's really said anything about the, the track itself, which is going to stay where it is.
Yeah, I believe it's, it's a resurfacing. I don't, I don't think it's a complete dig. I don't, I don't think it's a complete dig up and redo. I think it's, I think they have to strip down a layer of it to then resurface it, so.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
But, but, but neither, neither option one or two touches the track.
Correct, correct.
Or the lights.
I, I, I have a question about the, the track would be used first, wouldn't it? I mean, no, that's the spring. But what would we be done to the track anyway? It's got to be, something has to be done with it.
Something has to be done, but that wasn't. Yeah, Peter just came in and, you know, was offering to donate and try to work towards getting just the, the field itself up to a playable surface.
I've got more questions, but I'll wait till we get to option three.
Regarding the lights, can you, with option two, can you play at night without updoing the, upgrading the lights?
No. Dumb sports maybe.
I mean, as of right now, we're playing, you know, with, with, with the lights. So I think it would just be soccer and football. It would just be status quo right now without, without redoing the lights. But if you're going to do option one or option two, you're throwing, you know, you're saying we're not going to do the, the spring sports on the, on the field because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be really playable. They may be able to play a game or so. But I, I think it's playability that, that you kind of lose out, so.
Okay, we can go. If there are no other questions, we can go to option three. Who is going to go over that? Mike, would you or?
Mike, you're muted.
Mike, you're muted, muted?
Gotcha, sorry. So this, um, this just happened this week. And so just so, just to echo what Renee was talking about. We, Ashley and I met with Fran. Fran came and, and Ed was there and we had a meeting. We met with Peter Genellis too. This is after the, the vote. We met with a lot of stakeholders just to kind of talk about kind of next steps. And we didn't have any, any kind of ad hoc committee meetings because we didn't know which way we were going. You know, and I did know that we had to adjust the, the cost and reevaluate kind of funding and, and stuff like that. And that was what Ashley and I were, were discussing. Peter came in and, and talked about the, you know, the field. And we were saying it's an expensive, you know, fix. It's an expensive, you know, $250,000 to like, you know, fix the field was going to be expensive. So, you know, Renee did reach out. This was about a week and a half, two weeks ago to say, hey, could the ad hoc committee, you know, make a recommendation? And I did respond saying, we are still recommending a long term. Like the committee, which the last time we met, was talking about playability and trying to get a all purpose facility. And we were going more long term rather than short term. Peter came in a week ago. And he is all for fixing the facility. But he's all, he's all in on, you know, and, and, and a year round, like a turf. Not like, he's like, I will fix the field like and make it decent grass. But he would rather have it, you know, to be a, a multi-use kind of artificial surface himself. And he found all these connections that I didn't know about in terms of, you know, other, other funding kind of sources and other people in this municipality. And they, he came in, I think Renee, correct me if I'm wrong, Monday, I think. Was it yesterday, maybe you guys found out about this? Or I was in class, so I didn't go to the meeting. Renee, Peter, Ashley and somebody represented from Field Turf. So that's when this all came down. So there's no big plan in place. There's no, oh, I'm sliding one in. Like this is, I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting, but I got the information about it afterwards. And you can kind of see that, that this municipality works like. And Renee, you, you probably know a little bit more and can, can talk about how the, how the meeting progressed. Because as I said, I wasn't there. I was, I was teaching social studies at the time, so.
Yeah, I can, I can put the, the option back up so folks can see. So, yeah, I, I was asked to join a meeting yesterday afternoon with, with Peter and the representative from Field Turf. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Field Turf is the organization that BBA used. St. J, UVM, I think there was another one that they said within the state that they've done.
They also did Castleton as well back in the day. I think they also did in Middlebury, Castle in Middlebury.
So with them being an organization of the size that they are, they say that, you know, he said they're part of a cooperative bidding. Basically a nationwide co-op. So they have bids from various contractors throughout the country that they can call on at any time, depending upon where they have an upcoming project. And they have to use the figures that they publicly bid, you know, within a certain timeframe to come in and do this work for them. He said that the program that they have offered to their customers has been one that's, that's offered through a municipal lease option. So we wouldn't have to go out to the bond market. And he's saying that everything, we could do everything on Spinelli, including the lights, the track, resurfacing and putting the, the turf in. So it's everything except that, you know, our multi-use building. He actually said 2.2. I put on this document 2.4 million, just given that it probably won't be until next year if we even got to that point. They do offer an option to lease for up to eight years. And they offer an option to put money down or you don't have to put money down. So, you know, if the board decided that they wanted to use any, any funding, you know, to, to help reduce costs going forward. You know, that, that could be an option. But again, this just happened recently and I just wanted to share it with the board as a potential option. You wouldn't be committing to anything tonight. We certainly be exploring this even more. But I just need to know if there's anything that we're going to do to the field this year to make it playable for the fall. I need to know now so I can get my wheels in motion to do what I need to do to make sure that we can get it done this spring and summer to have it ready for the fall.
Renee, oops, all right. Go ahead, Susan.
Couple of questions. I mean, was this an option? This was not one of the options that was given to us before, this Field Turf. Did we, it wasn't one of the ones that we had looked at?
No, apparently, he, and Renee, you, I'm speaking secondhand because I heard this. But apparently Field Turf had reached out to the engineers about this whole like kind of option and, and the municipality and everything. And they didn't like connect back with them in regards to this. So this was all, this was new to us as of last week. And that's why Ashley wanted to meet in person with the representative and she did that yesterday. So this was not anything that we, we knew about, you know, from this past fall.
And we def, and my other second comment is, we absolutely have to do something anyway, no matter what, to have a playable field in the fall.
And I think that's what Renee is talking about right now. Whether, whether we want to do a, you know, like 25, $50,000, like just like, hey, we're going to level it. We're not going to dig everything out. We're not going to, you know, fix the drainage. We're not going to do that $250,000 project. We're just going to kind of use existing funds or I don't know what. Like just to make it set to be able to play for one year and then do a long term plan. Or do we want to do the $250,000 fix on the field? You know, in terms of the, the, the Pete Genellis, you know, plan. But then know that we still have to kind of work on the track and, and the complex and other, other parts of it as well. So I think that's where we're at. We're just seeing what direction, you know, the board wants. And, you know, Ashley and my recommendation is always long term. I don't, I'm not a big fan of like throwing a quarter of a million, a half a million, whatever dollars in and getting something that we're, we're, it's going to be better for sure. But it's not a long term fix. It's kind of a, a quick fix. So that's where, that's where we're at. But obviously, it's, it's not our, our say. And Renee can kind of deal with more of the financial side of things than I can, so.
It's just a short term fix that still doesn't, doesn't address sports equity in the high school at all.
Right.
One and two, so.
Renee, would we, would we need to get the, if we decided that option three was the direction?
I'm listening.
Okay, if we decided on option three for the $50,000, would we have to go out with a proposal for that or could we just do it within our budget?
We, we have money, you know, if, if the budgets pass. Tony's willing to, to move some things around what he has planned for next year that we would be able to, to fund this. But I would still have to put it out to bid because we'll be over that threshold of $40,000. That requires us for, to go out for public bid. Again, but because Peter's offering to do so much of this volunteer and whatnot, you know, the other bids probably won't come in anywhere near what he thinks he can do it for. But we, we still have to just because of, of that threshold. So Jackie has a hand up and then Ed as well. And just, I just wanted to mention, we have a time check because we have a six o'clock meeting. So 15 minutes, we're going to have people, other people jumping on here.
Yes, so what I'd like to say is, we, we already have $300,000 as a contingency fund left over from this year. So we have the money in the budget. Then we, according to what, what we've done the last meeting, in the new budget, we've added $1 million. So I think I can feel comfortable saying that option two could be funded without a further ado. And I, I have to keep reminding you that now inflation is up 9%. So this, this option three is great, but, but the, and the big buck is it's the same thing that the voters just voted down with the exception of the, the ticket booth. Okay, it's the same amount of money, less the ticket booth. And Fran, maybe you'd let Fran talk about Dan Whitman and what Dan is proposing up in Montpelier.
I think that's incorrect, sorry. Like it was 3.5 million and this is now 2.2 to 2.4 million. So it's, it's the, the building was not over a million dollars. So I just wanted to just point.
Corrected, Fran?
Yeah, well, there is something in the legislature that I think Dan Whitman is putting forth or somebody, I, I don't know if exactly about the turf field. And, and I don't know, I tried to get more information today, but I couldn't. So there is something in the legislature about turf. The other thing is, I'm looking at this option three. It says a 2.4, $2.4 million. Well, if I'm correct, and I'm not a math major, never said I was. If I take multiple times eight years, isn't that 4.3 million? Renee?
300,000.
Be financing that, that whatever comes into it. He said 2.2 million. I rounded it up to 2.4. So we would spread that out over eight years.
So if we did it over the eight years, we'd be almost 4.4 million. Am I correct?
No, no, we would, we would. No, we'd be paying 2.4 million with whatever the interest rate is on the municipal lease.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I could, I could sport option two. We'll get to there.
Okay, we have a, we have a time.
Ed has a hand and Leon, Ed and Leon.
Question. Option one and option two, we're talking about $200,000 to resurface the field. And in option three, they list $50,000 to do essentially the same thing. What is the difference?
Option three would be really a Band-Aid. It's not going to tear up anything. It's going to be putting topsoil down to fill holes, seed it, water it, try to flatten it. But it really is a very, very scaled back approach to what.
It's just a one year thing, Ed.
In the document.
Yeah, and even options one and two, it's, we're, we still potentially, you know, two years down the road could be right back where we are now. Because it's, it's not artificial turf, it's grass. So it'll get chewed up, it'll become uneven, we'll have to tend to it. You know, it'll have costs associated with upkeep as well.
Okay, did we have one more?
Leon, Leon.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we cleared up certain things. And I say we, we sound like we, we've done just that. When Fran came on and he said we was going to screw the taxpayers. And I wanted to make sure that we didn't leave this meeting without clearing that up. I didn't know about all these things that all out here. And it doesn't seem like we're going against what the taxpayers voted down at this meeting. There were all, what we're talking about is alternatives to try to get things up to date. And separately, there's a committee that's still looking at the long-term efforts to do the, the track and the other areas, the buildings and so forth along that line. So we're not pulling anything fast, as far as I can see, over anybody and any taxpayers out here. We're working to do what we needed to do in terms of keeping the, the, the equipment and the fields up the, up the par to the best of our ability with the funds that we can actually get to do these particular things. So, and, and, and I, I just wanted to say that. And then I wanted to say that when we have public comments, I like for us to just hear what anybody says and not go back and forth between one another. Because public comments allow you not, I mean, try to keep you from doing that. And that's what I was trying to do. I wasn't trying to shut off Fran or anything. I was just wanting him not to ask a question and expect an answer. And didn't want Mike to try to provide an answer or Tim in the middle of a public comment. That's not what it's for.
Thank you, Leon, very much. Okay, I think we're running, we're running out of time.
Dave, Dave has his hand up.
Okay.
I think option three is the way to go, in my opinion. We, we do the Band-Aids so it's playable for, for next year. And then we, we address all of our concerns in future years. And you've got this co-op and all it, it just seems to me that's the way to go.
Okay, okay.
I have a question.
All right, this is the last one because we got to vote. Go ahead.
Good. Is the parking lot still over by the concession stand in that 2.4 million?
I don't know. I don't know. Like Renee was in, in the meeting. I know they're focusing on, there's no building, like, there's no building. It's the track, it's the field and it's all the inner workings of the, of the field and it's the lights. And it was 2.2 million and Renee built in a, a buffer. The guy, the guy said 2.2 for, for everything. And it would be a March of, I think this was the timeframe, Renee, correct me if I'm wrong. March of 2023 start date to finish by, you know, end of August, September of 2023. So that was the, that was the window that he was giving. And I think what we need to know is whether or not we want to, Renee, correct me if I'm wrong, go with option one or two, which has to start March of 2022. Or we want to go option three, which would then kind of push us to, to the following year. So it's either we've got to start digging up the field this spring, like on options one or two. Or say, hey, we'll just put like really little, not dig it up. We're going to fix it, as Renee said, reseed some of it, flatten. Like on options one or two, or say, hey, we'll just put like really little, not dig it up, we're gonna fix it, as Renee said, reseed some of it, flatten it out. And then be ready for March of 2023. So that's the two options.
Yeah, so again, we're, we would not be committing to Field Turf and option three, like we, I mean, we've got to flush this out a little bit more. It's just. I need to know what we're doing with the the existing field right now. Are we Band-Aiding? Or are we tearing it up and putting new sod down?
Right, this, i- if if you vote for option three, it doesn't necessarily mean that you are, that. There are a lot of decisions that have to be made before we would move forward with option three. It gives us time to explore those options. And be sure that we are doing what is best for the school in the long term. So we need to give Renee a um, a vote really on by the board as to which option you prefer. We can start off.
I'll make a motion for option two.
Well, let me just start off for for wait, just wait one second, please. Why don't we go through each one of them? All those in favor of option one signify by saying aye. All those in favor of option two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of option three signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is, if I understand it correctly, option three passes.
Five to three, yes, five, five.
Five, three, zero, right? And that adds up to the number of people that we have. Okay, we thank you very much. I think at the next board meeting, we can go into a little more detail as to how we will approach uh option three. And um, maybe the same committee can can meet and and work on it, I'm not sure. But I'll be sure that it is on the agenda for the our March meeting that we can explore that in more detail. Is there anything else that we should address, Renee?
That's all I had for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment or anything?
Yes, I would like, I would like to make a comment and uh. I think you need to find out whether or not uh this bill is active uh against, you know, not having any more artificial turf fields. Or not up at the legislature, because doing this would probably uh. Pull the rug right out underneath you.
Very good. That's one of the options that they can look at, is they is they explore the possibilities.
And the person to speak with is Dan Whitman?
Correct. I I don't.
I think it's Dane, I think it's Dane Whitman.
Dane, Dane Whitman.
Okay, all those, we're all through. Take a motion, do a adjourn.
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.